All right, we'll get started. The City Council meeting for March 5th, 2019. We have special guests coming in, so we might, we have to get started. Clerk will call the roll. If you're present, say aye. If not, say nothing.
Do not hear speak up.
Anderson Burgos, Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan, Leahy.
Lebron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentin.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the City of Hoyoke.
City Council.
As I said, we, we have a very special guest. Counselor Bartley will escort them in and we'll start that.
He might be late.
In about a minute.
All mics should remain on.
Yes, leave your mics on, there's gonna be a...
And put your face on out where it's...
There'll be a slight presentation. Thank you very much. To give a little background to this, the Parade Committee, as we know, is just around the corner for the parade and they're, they've been working year-round, but they have many events to go to, of which Counselor Bartley said, "Sometimes we miss them and that's not fair." So he filed an order from Counselor Bartley to bring them all in and have, kinda like the kickoff for the parade, bring everyone down here. And ever since then, it's morphed into something bigger with the Caldorian Band coming in and playing for us. So I think, can't thank Counselor Bartley enough for this. This is absolutely amazing.
Hi, Councillors, City of Hoyoke, welcome. Welcome to St. Patrick's Month, the best month of the year. We passed an order last, earlier this year, to designate March as Irish-American Heritage Month in the City of Hoyoke. That's something we can be very proud of. It started on Friday with a flag raising with the Ancient Order Hibernians accompanied by the Parade Committee, and so it's just gonna continue to build and build up to the wonderful festivities on March 17th. I want to thank the President, I want to thank the City Clerk, I want to thank the member of the City Council for obviously supporting this, as they always do. The Caldorian Pipe Band, it really just makes the event, I have to say. So to have you here is, again, is truly an honor and greatly appreciated. So my job is very simple, to recognize this year's overtaxed, overtired Parade President, Devin Sheehan, who happens to be the Chair, or the Vice Chair of the Hoyoke School Board and, and I think the Chair of the Mass School Board as well. So he's really a busy man. Without further ado, Devin will introduce the distinguished members here of the award winners and we'll proceed from there. Devin, congratulations.
Thank you. And I'll first say, I never feel overtaxed being in the City of Hoyoke. I appreciate everything that's given to me. Let me first recognize the Hoyoke Caledonians. They're celebrating their 109th birthday this year, in 2019. So thank you so much for keeping the spirit alive in Hoyoke, and it's always an event when bagpipers are playing. So just a round of applause for you. It truly is an honor to come here and represent the Parade Committee. I remember just probably like many people watching the parade as a young child out on North Hampton Street and seeing everything go by, and it would not be possible if it weren't for the hard work of the Hoyoke Police Department, the Fire Department, the DPW, the Auxiliary Police, the Hoyoke Gas and Electric, the Massachusetts State Police, our medical emergency personnel, the great support from People's Bank and the entire business community. And we're also so grateful to the Mayor's Office and the City Council for continuing to support the parade, the road race, and all the festivities that go along with it. I talked to some older members of the Parade Committee and they say, "Well, we were always here around St. Patrick's Day, and now the Parade Committee has grown into a year-round endeavor." And it's because of everyone's support that we're able to do that. Really thankful to Counselor Bartley, who has continued to keep this, the spirit of St. Patrick's Day alive in the City of Hoyoke, as he filed orders a few years ago to make March Irish Heritage Month and make sure that we remember that. But today, I'm honored to bring some of our Parade Committee here with us and some of our award winners. First, probably his first time back here in the City Council chamber since leaving here, but the soon-to-be President of the Parade Committee next year, my first Vice President, Mark Joyce. So he'll be here next year. Now, many of our Grand Colleen and some of our court members could not be here with us today. They're, many of them are college students, so they're off finishing their studies because I know that they have a whirlwind week ahead of them next week. But I want to introduce, I'll mention that Lauren Delude is our Grand Colleen, and also we have Caroline Sullivan, who could join us today. And Summer Keppel. And they, in their court is also Brianna Minnie and Megan Gochet, who were at school. Now, the man who's gonna make sure that we have great weather for that day and a longtime city business owner whose family roots are really tied to the City of Hoyoke is Roger Reedy, is our Grand Marshall.
Sunny and 43.
We'll take it. Making sure that our runners in the road race have stayed hydrated for many years, another great city business owner who is our Citizenship Award winner and owner of Laurel Pure Water is Joe Weiss. Our Rowan Award winner couldn't be here tonight, but that is Ann Lowe, and not only is she the Rowan Award winner, but she's also celebrating her 60th anniversary of being a Grand Colleen. It not only takes a great amount of effort, but it also takes a really good amount of fundraising to put on our parade. And we're fortunate to have a marketing team that is made up of Jim Leahy, one of your Councillors, and also Sheila Morrow. But one of the people that really keeps them moving sometimes and makes sure that the bills go out on time and makes sure that we are thanking our sponsors is Jennifer Cooper. So I want to thank her with our O'Connell Award. And rounding out some of our award winners that are here tonight is our Gallivan Award winner who, that recognizes an out-of-town member of our Parade Committee, and that goes to Joe Morrison. We have two other award winners that couldn't be present, but will be here during Parade Weekend, and that's our Ambassador Award winner, and that's Dr. Christopher Fox, who is a retired professor from Notre Dame. And our John F. Kennedy National Award winner this year goes to a Hoyoke native and someone that we've all seen on TV commercials at times and an improv, and that's TJ Jagodowski. Once again, thank you all. I'm so excited to see you all on March 17th at Kmart Plaza. Hope all of you are marching, will be out there to enjoy the wonderful warm weather that we're promised. So it's gonna be a great day. See you at the festivities. Thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Does it total?
Nine.
With your vote, you approve the petition for the poll. Next is public comment. We do have some people that are out of town, so motion would be to suspend the rules to allow them to speak.
Suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. There are four people who are looking for public comment. First one is Wayne, it looks like Stanley, of 38, Fisk Road, Shelburne Falls, Massachusetts. Please come to the mic.
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak. I'll explain in the beginning of my, my notes why I came down from Franklin County. And it has to do with the item 15F, the sale of the property to Health, B2 Health. At first glance, the agenda item looks pretty simple and uncontroversial. It's a sale of unused property by the City of Hoyoke to this company, B2 Health LLC for development. A little investigating shows it's anything but simple and routine. And the consequences of this sale will have profound, I think, negative effects, not just on the people of Hoyoke, but throughout Hampden, Hampshire, and Franklin County. Today, I read in the Greenfield Recorder, they reported that before Bay State expressed formal interest in the Hoyoke site, it formed B2 Health LLC with US Health Vest, which was registered with the state in November, and the company put in a bid for $250,000. So any discussion of the sale of the land to B2 Health cannot be divorced from its planned use as a private for-profit mental health facility. As part of the deal, Bay State has announced it will close three mental health units at Franklin Medical Center in Greenfield, near where I live, Noble Hospital in Westfield, Wing Hospital in Palmer. All the issues involved need to be discussed before this, I would say, this sale can be agreed upon. And I know the arguments that Bay State and its supporters put forward. One is it'll provide taxes to the city and the state. And granted, the company will pay property taxes to the City of Hoyoke, but beyond that, we won't see much of any tax benefits. Health Vest is an LLC, a limited liability company. As such, it has what they call "flow-through entity." That means the profits flow through the company to the investors. They will be taxed as individual profits, as individual income, not as corporate profits as they should be. The profits from the company are distributed to their members and they pay the taxes on them. The company is not subject to Massachusetts corporate excise tax. There are other tax benefits to an LLC, which is one reason...
Wayne, just one thing, your time's almost up.
Oh, okay.
You've got two minutes, so...
Okay.
Just a heads up.
I'm moving right along. There's also claimed it'll also provide jobs, and I feel this is highly dubious assertion. And it's contradicted by the history of privatization of health services throughout the country, including those facilities operated by Health Vest. The main obligation of Health Vest is to funnel profits to its investors. The other thing is it'll provide better mental health care and substance abuse, and I think it's a disgrace that a company that's built upon profits is offering health care and the necessity of insurance to be able to be provided for them. They won't provide for people without insurance. I think there's, I mean, there's tons of stuff that I've still got here, there's lots of I could add. I just want to say that you can disagree with everything I said here, but I think at the very least, I think we can all agree that this sale should be tabled until a thorough public discussion is held to fully inform the public and to have them be able to question people, public officials and Bay State officials, as to the consequences of turning over almost all mental health care to a private for-profit company. I believe the Mayor and the City Council owe the residents of Hoyoke this, and I believe Bay State owes this to all the people of Western Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrew Abin, February 8, 62, Middle Street, Florence, Mass.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak as well, and I kinda wanted to speak to the same issue that Wayne just spoke to right now. And just for a little bit of background, I, there was a forum in Greenfield that was recently held on the 28th where people spoke powerfully about their needs and struggles with mental health issues. And this was in response to Bay State announcing, announcing these different psychiatric ward closures across Western Massachusetts. So to get to why am I here, the proposal to sell this land is the first step to create a crisis of care for this community, Hoyoke as well as...
Just one thing, a second. Sign has to go down, no signs in the chamber. Thank you, sorry.
And in the wake of a growing movement for Medicare for All, this new facility, which is proposed as a for-profit operation, would be anathema to the demands for better care and access to what should be a human right. We recognize that it's a, or at least I can, I can speak for myself, I think it's, it's pretty clear that this is a complex issue, that Hoyoke as a community also needs resources, not just access to a new mental health facility and also tax revenue, but it shouldn't come at the expense of closing facilities across Western Massachusetts, and it shouldn't come at the, it shouldn't, I think it shouldn't be done under a for-profit model and operated by a company whose historical record, and there's plenty of research to show this, has operated other facilities providing substandard care, dangerous working conditions for their employees, and really creating more dangers for people in their community while at the same time buying out facilities that are quote-unquote "underperforming" in order to effectively create artificial demand for their services. Really, we should be expanding those services, making them locally controlled and operated by the community. And really, this, this discussion for the sale of this piece of land should be, as Wayne said, expanded to the public, taking into consideration people who actually need these services, the mental health patients and broader Western Massachusetts community, and especially Hoyoke residents. So what I'm asking is to either, either reject this proposal or to table it for further discussion for, for much thorough investigation about what's really at stake here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Patrick Burke, 43, Pearl Street, Hoyoke, Mass.
Hi, it's funny, because I was here a year ago over some certain, certain issues, and I guess I'm really just here because of the wonderful display we just had about the Hoyoke Parade, but I actually am also here to speak on the issue of the sale of the geriatric property. So I, I actually now am a internal organizer for the Service Employees International Union, actually do represent folks in Hoyoke. They won't really be affected by this directly, but I'm also a Labor Council President and I, you know, grew up in Westfield and used services at Noble Hospital. So, you know, I'm, I am concerned that, you know, again, that, you know, right now, you know, you all, you know, and this is, it's just kinda by chance that, you know, this is a public property and, you know, it's being, you know, you know, that there was a conversation about selling it to Bay State and a for-profit healthcare provider. And again, I think that, you know, we need more beds, you know, the opioid crisis is, is real, there's a lot of other issues that, you know, folks are more and more dealing with mental health problems, but again, you know, the fact that instead of like a policy where we're like, "Okay, well, let's keep, you know, all the regional resources open and open up more beds," this is more like, "Oh, consolidation," which is going to harm several other communities, and we don't know the impacts this may have on resources at Hoyoke Medical or at Providence, which are already providing some, you know, mental health inpatient care. So again, I think that, you know, I kind of agree with, you know, what other folks have said, that it makes sense to table this and have a longer discussion about it, you know, because there are probably ways to address, you know, I think there's ways to address many of these concerns by just having a conversation about it. And this has really kind of come up very recently, that anyone has been able to kinda look at this and have a conversation about it, both in Hoyoke and other affected communities. So as a, you know, Hoyoke resident who, you know, wants to, you know, see healthcare services more available in Western Mass, I think, you know, you all have a role, and at least in this particular instance of like, "Well, you know, we can, you know, ask for a little more information, you know, we can at least, you know, you know, and also ask, you know, the Mayor that publicize some of the conversations that have happened." And I think that would be, you know, that's a good thing. It's a good thing to have, you know, it, this is also an opportunity to bring these issues to public.
Thank you. And last on the list is Rick Purcell from 279 Suffolk Street.
Good evening. I'm here for a different issue. I'm here for the expansion of the gas pipeline. This is coming from Hoyoke, from Agawam, West Springfield, through Hoyoke, and we're gonna be the enablers here in Hoyoke that they want us to be. Columbia Gas, on a national level, climate change is real, even though the current occupant of the White House thinks it's a Chinese hoax. If you believe that, then I got some land right here in Hoyoke I can sell you that I just sold. That's a national level. It's frac gas coming from Pennsylvania, and if you don't know what frac gas is, Google "gas land 1" or "gas land 2." It dirties the water, it dirties the air, and natural gas is a fossil fuel. I don't have any children, I don't have any grandchildren, but many of you do. This planet is relying on you to stop this craziness that we have called climate change. And it doesn't start with one person, it starts with this body. This body here is the, is the body that can stop being the enabler for this destruction. And the destruction is being brought on by Columbia Gas. They have a proven track record of destroying and killing things. They started in 2012 when they tried to blow up Springfield, they did blow up Springfield. They started off with a million dollars worth of destruction, probably more than a million. Now they escalated, last year, blowing up Eastern Massachusetts, and they've, they've risen their, their kill field to a billion dollar worth of destruction. So how far, what is their limit? What is your limit? When, when do we say no? Enough of this. When everything's gone? And it will be gone. For your, for your Irish, future Irish, Isra smiling people, please say no to the gas pipeline coming to Hoyoke.
That is it for public comment. Now on to communications. Item number two from the Mayor, letter reappointing Deborah Alicia, 147, Sycamore, to serve as a member of the Commission on Disabilities, which will expire March 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is approved, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Three is the minutes of the February 19th meeting.
Motion to take 3, 5, 6, and 7 as a package.
Motion to take 3, 5, 6, and 7 as a package, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to receive and approve the City Council.
The motion would be to receive and approve. Five is park and rec minutes. Six is the Public Works Sewer Department minutes. Seven is the Fire Commission minutes. Motion is to receive 3, 5, 6, and 7 and approve, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Number four is from Hilltop Securities, Hoyoke Credit Rating Overview.
Motion to send to the Finance.
Motion is received and referred to Finance, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Petitions. Petition for, it's a renewal for a second-hand license at 50 Hoyoke, which is the mall.
Receive and grant.
Echo ATM.
Receive and grant the renewal pending all municipal fees and taxes.
All taxes, motion is to receive and approve. All taxes are paid, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Nine is petition for a new special permit for a motor vehicle repair garage at 2237 North Hampton Street.
Receive, sent to DGR.
Question is received and referred to DGNR, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Ten is a special permit for marijuana testing facility at 28 Appleton Street.
Receive, sent to ordinance.
Second.
Question is to send to ordinance, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. President's report. As we know, the parade is just around the corner for us, so I know there are a lot of different dates and things in a sense of fun runs or what have you. Counselor Leahy, would you have those available at this time, or?
The main one, if I could. I sent everybody an email, and I think Ryan did as well, regarding the Ambassador's Breakfast. The Ambassador's Breakfast is always a good time, and it's also, it provides all the City Councillors a ride up to the Kmart Plaza as well. So I've only got, I think, one RSVP from the person who's not even here tonight, one.
Gladys.
Gladys did as well. So you don't need to RSVP with me. I CC Jackie Reardon, that's the person you probably want to RSVP with, so that's the most important one.
With regard... With regards to Counselor Anderson Burgos, he is homesick. He called me yesterday, sounded awful, I think he has the flu, but I told him with the parade around the corner, stay home. No, he does send his regards, he is very sick. Counselor President is on the way. For the parade, in essence, marching on Sunday, what time should members be there?
It's not this Sunday, it's the Sunday after.
The following Sunday, yeah.
It actually falls on the 17th itself. So, if you guys don't go to the breakfast or you don't get a ride by the shuttle buses, I would suggest being at the Kmart Plaza no later than about 11:30 in the morning.
Right, because remember, they shut down the street and you can't drive up there at that point.
It's difficult, yeah.
With that, anyone else with announcements of importance or to share? Nope? All right, we'll move on. Committees and reports, ordinance, 11A. Committee on Ordnance was referred. Financial Order 100, and it says amended to Chapter 2 of the revised Court of Ordinances. Have considered the same, recommend that be adopted, so I'll turn it over to Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order was filed some time ago, and it got sent over to Finance. The purpose of it is to set up the revolving fund for the improvements at the fire stations. So, once it got back to ordinance, we took it up, and so before us is the language establishing this revolving fund. I would note that we did vote an amendment to the language, as it appears on our agenda, that under the section where it's talking about the use of the funds shall be the lesser of actual receipts collected during the fiscal year, we added language that would allow funds that were in a remaining balance from previous years to also be utilized. So, that amendment has been put into the legal form.
Yeah, I do have the legal form, I just found it.
Right, I'm just, because people don't have it in the agenda.
Yep.
Copy.
And you've reviewed the legal form, everything's exactly the way you --
The only change we made was that one.
Okay.
So, as long as you have that.
Yep.
That's all we voted in committee. So, I would make a motion to pass the first reading, I believe, because we have to add this to the ordinance.
Yep. So, motion is to pass the first reading. Any further discussion, or anyone else?
I'll pass the first reading, but I do have questions.
Okay, so motion is to pass the first reading, and we'll just say under discussion, Counselor McGivern, Counselor Lisi, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on record, I'll be voting against this, as I would vote against the establishment of most, any revolving fund, that is for the purpose of what should be part of our daily operation class. The repairs to the fire department, any city-owned building, should come out of the regular budget and should be controlled by the mayor and by the city council, not by one or two people. The money that, you know, is taken from the ambulance service, and don't get me wrong, the purpose and intent of how that money's going to be spent is very much needed in two or three of our fire stations, and I certainly support that. I just don't support the money being used away from the city budget and away from the control of the city council and the control of the mayor. I don't think it's a good practice, I think we're doing too much of it. It also doesn't count for, it becomes part of our, it does not become part of our receipts when we look at the cherry sheet prior to the budget, and it's very hard to take a good look at what is a deficit when so much revenue is being spread into revolving funds, and again, you know, lack of control by the council itself. My understanding is that the fire department has even had second thoughts about this revolving fund, and are thinking about backing out of using the money, about, not using the money, but about establishing this to use the money in the repairs of the buildings themselves.
Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. I just apologize to the committee members for not being able to make this meeting. I did have a scheduling conflict, but I was wondering if the auditor expressed support or lack of support for this measure? That was one question I had, and then the other question was, I see that there's a limit on the total amount that could be expended from the fund, and in years past, when we have established revolving funds, we usually put a fairly low cap on it, so that there's some seed money there for a particular department to be able to do some small projects or repairs, or however any particular department might use it, but the rest would then roll into the general fund. So, I was just wondering if there was some sort of cap set.
So, I'll answer that. It says, within the legal language, under purposes and expenditures, the limit on the total amount which may be expended from the fund during the fiscal year shall not exceed the available balance of the fund. That's what it reads.
And so, there's no cap on the amount that can be put into the fund?
Well, the cap is, in essence --
The receipts from the ambulance.
The receipts from the action ambulance lease payments. So, lease payments are going into this account, so that's your cap as to what the lease payment is. How much can come out is whatever's in the fund, you cannot exceed it.
Okay, thank you. And then, did the auditor come in, weigh in in any way, shape, or form on the establishment of the revolving fund?
I don't recall her --
No.
-- putting, weighing in on this.
Okay, thank you.
I think it just came through to her as a technical issue.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, just, you know, and, you know, we had the friendly amendment because there is going to be double payment for the rent this year, and if we went on the basis of only what you're getting each fiscal year, that money could have been sitting there for another year, but, and I've heard some comments, Counselor McGivern, in terms of what you said about maybe doing it some other way, but I talked to the purchasing director yesterday about this, and her view was that if we put this into the revolving fund, the fire department's going to be able to get some major repairs done in Station 3, and some minor repairs done in Station 6 with the money that they're going to have, and then eventually, if the city wants to go and do it another way, they could bond for the additional, that's the goal, to bond. Her opinion was that this is a much faster way to get the major repairs, the roof, the lead paint removal, and a few other things, and that would all be within the balance of the account once the receipts are made.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, and I would just add, in particular, they were speaking of the need for the roof on that station, and I think going forward, if we address our financial management issues, and we establish a capital budget, and we begin to move in that direction, then we could potentially eliminate a number of revolving funds. Just because we establish them at a point in time doesn't mean we have to keep them forever. However, I think people need the tools to get things done right now. We can't just sit there with fire stations with leaking roofs, and I think this is a good tool right now to get it done. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the establishment of a revolving fund for the fire department.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Leahy?
Laboe Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Seven ayes, four nays.
Need seven, right?
It's a majority.
No, I thought it was backwards.
I think it's a two-thirds.
I thought it was two-thirds.
It's an amendment to Chapter 2, and the question was, did the mayor ever sign it before it came to us?
He did.
I don't know if his signature's on, and what we're voting on right up there.
I'll tell you in a second, Joe.
It was in the minutes that he --
This one was signed by the mayor, October 2, 2018. So, actually, it would be seven votes. With your vote, you approved the establishment of the revolving account. Committee on Ordnance was referred to special permit application for EMB LLC. For establishment of a marijuana facility cultivation purposes, 140 Middlewater Street, Holyoke, recommended that the following conditions be added, that the owner of the building always pay commercial property taxes to the extent allowed by federal, state, local laws during the special permit, that the business retain a minimum of 30% of Holyoke residents for non-security jobs, that hiring preference be given to security personnel that were retired Holyoke police officers or retired members of another police department now living in the city of Holyoke. There should be no marijuana consumption on the site, there shall be no deliveries or retail medical marijuana from the site to individual homes, residents, or people. Motion be --
So, the motion is to receive and approve the special permit.
Motion is to receive and approve the special permit.
With the conditions.
With the conditions, as read. Counselor Bacon.
So, this is a company that wants to do strictly cultivation, and I found this to be a really interesting company, because they also do internal cultivation and growing of herbs and vegetables, and they're looking to expand that business also. That actually got my interest more than the marijuana part, but nonetheless, I think it's a good concept, so we can have fresh herbs and vegetables throughout the year. So, in any event, we could get a twofer with this particular company, and it was otherwise a pretty straightforward special permit application, as we have heard quite a few of them at this point in time.
Anyone else? Counselor Lisi.
I just wanted to say that I had an opportunity to meet with the applicants, and I was really impressed with the project that they put forward and some of the philosophy behind the indoor growing activities that they've been conducting in other states. I do also want to note that some of the motivation behind legalizing the marijuana industry in the state is to create a degree of reparative justice around the failed war on drugs of the 70s and the 80s, and if we do approve this tonight, this would be our first applicant of color in the city of Holyoke, and I really welcome that.
Counselor Barton?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to just make a couple brief remarks. I was, as a chair, as a chair knew, I was away taking care of my parents for some health issues with them, so I wasn't able to tell, but I did watch the, I did watch the meeting. I, and I don't want to make a motion tonight, because I heard the council's argument, the committee's argument that night, to remove one of the standard stipulations that we have in there relative to ours. I heard what they said, because this is not a retail establishment, but I would just ask councilors to consider this. We want them, to have them come back to amend a special permit requires about a five-minute meeting at ordinance. That is not a burden, that's one. But second of all, more importantly, I think we want them to come back in, because we want to hear how they're doing, especially relative to job creation. How do we get them back in here? Other, what other methods do we have? We have a special permit. The proponent was here, said at some point, not now, and he was unclear, maybe a year, maybe two, he would want to come. He didn't even want it. But the motion was made, and it was seconded, to give something they didn't even ask for. Now, they'll want it down the road, so, I mean, I didn't get the mentality at that point, and now, if we take it away, they don't come back in here, and so we don't get a chance to hear from them a second time. What's the big deal? I mean, they haven't come up to the rail, give us a five-minute overview as to how the company's doing, especially hiring, with the other conditions with the Holyoke people. You've thrown it away now. So, I don't understand that. Now, I wasn't there to vote on it that night, I don't like having subcommittee meetings at full city council, but if, and no rationale was given that night, other than, well, it's not retail. Okay, so what? I mean, they didn't ask for it. We gave them something they never asked for, Mr. President. I don't, I mean, if somebody wants to speak to that point, if somebody thinks that I'm, you know, if I'm off base, fine, but I would just say, we had standard, we have standard restrictions on every special permit, we waived one once last time, and somebody's saying, well, you know, we don't have restrictions on other businesses, we don't have restrictions on, oh, I don't know, you named a paper company. Well, they don't have to get a special permit, Mr. President. We know, we know they don't have restrictions, we get it. We know they're already 24/7. I don't know, I would just think we, I thought the committee kind of gave some, when they don't ask for it, you know, why we have to give them something is, to me, it didn't make sense, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I asked the committee to consider this for a couple reasons. One reason is, this is manufacturing, and if you think of the heyday of the city of Holyoke when manufacturing was at its peak, most manufacturers operated three shifts, and with those three shifts, it created a much more viable city in terms of entertainment, in terms of shopping, in terms of, you know, stores being open later, and more important, additional jobs. And the petitioner did say that, not their initial proposal, but they do intend to go to a second shift, and they would love someday to have the demand to have to have a third shift, because that means they're producing more, and when you produce more, you make more. What we like is that, what I like is that the positive part about it is, that means more jobs and more benefits, you know, to the Holyoke residents and more benefits to the city itself. Amending a special permit is not that simple. It would require another public hearing, cost to both the petitioner, time, somewhat time-consuming, but more important, it would bring in an additional cost to the petitioner itself, and could delay the opening of a second shift or a third shift itself. I just see no need to put a time limit on manufacturing. Retail, the dispensaries is a different story, but manufacturing is manufacturing, it's closed indoors. This council has taken the steps to make sure where this happens is controlled, and to make sure the security is part of the operation itself, but I think the more hours they work, the more benefit it is to the city.
Anyone? Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, I just, Counselor McGivern, and I think Counselor Sullivan also brought that up, and that it was a potential, without creating a less friendly environment for goodness, to be able to potentially have more jobs as we get into a third shift, and, you know, and again, the fact that it's cultivation, and it's not retail, and it's not being distributed other than in their larger trucks, if you will, certainly seemed like it was a reasonable thing to do. And one other thing in terms of, and I know they're sitting back there, so I'm going to assume that they're going to nod their head when I say this, but they've agreed as Ward II counselor to, as they start to hire, to start giving me a record, not necessarily of the person, but of the number of Holyoke people that are being hired, and specifically, I know the request was made that they hire a number of people from Ward II, and that they were going to try to give me that as well. I don't think they're hiring for about six months, but that that was part of what they had agreed to do. Are they nodding heads?
They're doing this, no. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, I'm so kidding.
I think Terry's looking for a job. Oh, that's it.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Bacon.
And, Mr. President, just as a point of information, I believe as the council, we could request a business to show us how they're meeting the conditions of the special permit, if there was a question raised relative to that, right?
Correct, we can. Anyone else? So, motion is to grant the special permit. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the permit with the conditions that were read, which there were five.
Five.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Laboe Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the special permit. 11C.
Mr. President, 11C and 11D remain in committee.
Second. Yes, they do, because you don't have enough signatures. So, 11C, Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that the city council and mayor amend A commission should be comprised of Hoyoke residents only. That's going to stay in because there's not enough signatures. Eleven D, community ordinance was referred, that the city council amend its ordinances, create a committee to study the costs and benefits of establishing its own ammo control facility. So, those are going back to committee.
If I may, these orders were tabled in committee and they will be taken up on March twelfth.
March twelfth, okay. Eleven E, community on ordinance was referred, in order that a permanent reconfiguration of Sunset and Ashley Reservoir, Ashley Road or other streets in the neighborhood be considered once the temporary pilot project is completed, recommended that it's complied with.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is receive and adopt, under discussion.
So, we had a public hearing in response to a petition from the neighborhood. DPW went out. They gave us their recommendation relative to how the roads should be closed. They recommended a sidewalk construction which would allow for emergency vehicles to access those roads still, fire, police. There is a construction that allows for that. However, the price tag of the project is $25,000, which they do not have available to them at this time. And I'm not certain we can anticipate it in the budget. So, you will see a subsequent order that I've filed to continue this project moving forward later in the agenda. But for the purposes of this, it is complete.
So, the motion is, is recommended that committee has complied with. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Finance committee. Twelve A, committee on finance was referred, collective bargaining agreement for local fourteen fifty-nine DPW.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Second.
Motion is receive, adopt, that memorandum of agreement be approved. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. A bit unusual from agreements that usually come before us in that the money that will pay for this agreement was already in the budget in anticipation of this. We did have some discussion last June when the mayor presented the budget, why there were some increases and why there were some position changes. Essentially, it's a, it's a three-page document that we received the end of January. And it's, what it does is it modifies what's known as the mechanics pool that has been run by the DPW since back when Mike Sullivan was our mayor. He had consolidated mechanics from the police department, fire department, and DPW into one unit under the umbrella of the DPW to, to do kind of a smorgasbord of as much in-house repairs of vehicles owned by the city. Over the years, it seems to have proven itself to be a venture that was a little bit unknown at the time, but a venture that not only is a little bit more cost-efficient, but it also, I think, was more efficient in terms of, of service to the, to each of our departments who do have vehicles, some in constant need of repair such as the police department. However, there are specialty needs, and this memorandum of agreement recognizes both the specialty needs in the fire department where certain things were still being contracted out on a higher level in specialty needs for some of the repairs that are needed to police cruisers that go above and beyond that of a cruiser. So, essentially, what this does is it realigns the, the people who are, the mechanics who are working in that department, both the working, I'm sorry, the foreman and the mechanics itself. New positions that were created was a dedicated police fleet mechanic who would do the police work first, any other work as necessary once the, any police work was completed, an emergency vehicle technician, motor vehicle equipment repair person got an increase, and the current employees got increases too. The increases are in the budget. They're a little bit hard to follow, but the hourly increases reflect about a three-thousand, thirty-seven-hundred-dollar increase for the, some of the existing employees. And the new positions come in at around $50,000 apiece, which would be a PW twenty-six, step five. The committee felt that this was a prudent way to spend taxpayers' dollars in terms of keeping the department together, but at the same time recognizing the need for specialty employees to be hired in, not just now, but in the future. Recommended to adopt. Please note that even though we don't negotiate contracts, I've said this a hundred times, we do vote on the appropriation. And we did a vote on, on the appropriation when we accepted the budget. But we're also voting on the appropriation because this is not just this year, but there will be a future impact of financial needs which we could vote down at this time if we chose to.
Anyone else? So, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for, in essence, to transfer that impact to budget going forward.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LaBrow Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the collective bargaining agreement. Twelve B, committee on finance is referred, in order that the following actions be taken to strengthen the financial condition of our city as recommended by Cindy McNerney of our bond council. Have considered the same, recommend that that be adopted and forwarded to the mayor.
Under our discussion, Mr. President, motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. This is a, an order filed by Counselor Bacon. I believe there were some co-signers also in to a response to the earlier discussions we had with our financial advisor last year and into, actually into this year. And I think some of the things that Cindy had recommended, Counselor Bacon had picked up on, on things that we should have been doing all along. And the committee had a very healthy discussion, discussion on these, on these areas. We included in a number of things that would, would help out, including a stabilization fund that would, could be established towards the, like the middle schools, towards the, the investment into or building or development of buildings themselves. A number of other ways that we, we need to take steps to improve our bond rating. It sounds like we, we do have a better bond rating than we've had over the decades, but we are not up at, up to par in terms of, of a higher bond rating, which would be something getting into what's known as the double As. We're around, I think it's A-plus at the moment. It's, 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 it's a goal and it needs to be initiated, excuse me, out of room one, being that only the mayor can initiate any increases to appropriations and any increases to spending. Of course, anything the mayor initiates in terms of an appropriation at one time or another must come through this body for a final vote. We're recommending that the, we, we like the advice of our financial advisor, and we're recommending that we ask the mayor to initiate some of these policies and to bring them forward.
Anyone else? Motion is to receive and approve and send to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twelve C, committee on finance referred, in order in accordance with master law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A, the city hereby accept the provisions of the veteran grant program.
Motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had our veterans director in. Jesus told us, first of all, there is a match to this. There's a $6,000 match. It's almost a hundred percent match of the $6,000 that the grant is. But when you, when you hear what the city gets out of it, I think as the finance committee did, you agree that it's a, both a worthy match and the dollars that would be well-spent. This is a military preservation grant. There's something like eighteen thousand folders, files that are under the controls of the, our veterans department right now. These are military records over the years that need to be digitized and need to be, you know, put into a form where they can be preserved forever in a, in a more digital format and not a paper format, which our understanding is what they are now. The $12,000 would, would just about do the job. Jesus could not say enough things about the, the work that needs to be done and asks us to respectfully agree to the grant, but agree to the, knowing that if we adopt the grant, we are agreeing to the matching funds. Committee voted for, nothing for adoption.
Anyone else? Motion, oh, Counselor Bacon.
I would just like to comment that I think the good thing about this, if we support it, is it's a one-time thing. And then, once all the records are digitalized, they can just keep it going. So, it won't be an ongoing expense in that department. Thanks.
So, motion is to pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
Pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve the grant. Twelve D, committee on finance referred, in order that there hereby be appropriated two thousand three hundred from pay solicitor to special counsel services, recommended that be denied.
Make a motion to receive and adopt the committee recommendation.
Receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Solicitor, the department headmaker of the request actually asked to give leave to withdraw. We didn't have to ask anymore. As you know, Mr. President, the, we do not give leave to withdraw the financial orders from the mayor. We have to vote them up or down. So, our recommendation is to deny it per request of the department head.
All right. So, motion is to pass the first reading to deny it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to pass the second reading?
So, move.
Second.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting yes to deny.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LaBrow Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous.
With your vote, you approve to deny the request of two thousand three hundred. There was no public safety, no public service. Development and government relations committee, fifteen A, committee on DGNR who was referred, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, community block grant application.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I would, I'd like to make a motion to table this here in city council, but I don't want to make the motion unless, if a counselor wants to object. And the only reason I, I want to make that motion is because we, as you all have the packets on, on your desks, but the mayor's column is vacant, is empty. I mean, that, that would be unprecedented for us to take a vote on this without any intel from the mayor's position. We had Alicia Zeller before us last night. She said she's attempted to reach him. She said she would attempt to reach him, but, but they haven't connected. You know, I, I get they're all busy. My hope is, I mean, if a counselor wants to go through tonight, then, then we'll, we'll go through. But I would much rather have the mayor's position on a public document before we go out. I know, I realize we'll get it at the end, but I'd rather have the position before we take a vote on any of this.
So, the motion is to table. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, all right. So, everybody's good. All right.
Fifteen B, committee on DGNR who was referred, a communication dated two thirteen nineteen from mayor, proposal for the geriatric authority building, recommended that the order has been received.
Right. Receive and adopt, committee report.
Motion is to receive and adopt that we're accepting the communication. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifteen C, committee on DGNR who was referred, that the Honorable City Council, in accordance with master law thirty B, and that the Hoyoke procurement ordinance votes to accept the offer from the B-two Health LLC, purchase forty-five Lower Westfield Road, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Motion is to...
Recommend that be adopted.
Right. Motion to receive and adopt, committee report, and allow for the, for the sale of Westfield Road, or the Lower Westfield Road property.
Motion is to receive, adopt. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Right. So, we had a really robust meeting last night for an hour and a half. And I, I know, I'll just quickly address the speakers this, this morning, or this, this morning, this evening were tremendous. But we, we had, we had an hour and a half meeting last night where we, as per usual, we suspended our rules and allowed the public to address. We, we didn't hear from anyone in opposition last night. Now, I realize everybody can't make a meeting, but the, the opportunity was there to come up to the, up to the rail and, and tell us their, their position. That being said, we had Mr. Marrell before us, we had Ms. Belanger with us, and we had the proponents as well from B-two Health, joint venture between, between Health, Health Vest and then Bay State Medical. Just to summarize, an hour and forty-minute meeting, it was, it was a very impressive proponent, Mr. President. I, I asked him, I, you know, a very leading question, a hard question, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you talk to your neighbors that, you know, you're going to come in, have an acute care psychiatric hospital in the middle of a heavy residential neighborhood with Devonshire Place across the street, a brand-new development going in next door with, with a hundred plus or minus market rate units, Whiting Farms residential units, Donu School. And, and his answer was, they, they should be, they should be very happy that we're going to be here. And he went out, he went on to list his reasons. It's a, it's a two-story, seventy thousand square foot building. The development piece is about thirty million dollars. The estimated tax revenue to the city of Hoyoke, it's, looks like somewhere near about two hundred five thousand dollars based upon what looks to be an estimated five-point-two million dollar valuation at this very preliminary stage by the assessor. So, the interesting part about this, I mean, nothing's ever simple, right? There is a ten-year guarantee tax window to the city of Hoyoke at the full value. After that, it's a fifty percent, it'd be fifty percent no matter what. Now, the proponent, the CEO, who, he said, listen, we're a for-profit corporation. We have seven, seven of these across America. We've never, we've never transferred it to a, to a, to a not-for-profit. So, I mean, you, that's what he said. I mean, you have to, I mean, what else, what am I going to say? I mean, I'm just repeating what he, what he told us. Just a couple other interesting parts here. If, if it gets up and running, if we approve it, of course, if it gets up and running, you're, you're looking at about up to a hundred twenty beds, a lot of security. You are looking at two hundred fifty permanent jobs with, with full benefits, as he said. Now, this is all coming from the proponent, so. But this is vetted by, this is vetted by Marcos and Oped. Let's see, there are, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a very unique proposal. I, I will say, I will say that, that, that I think the questions that we put forth last night to the, to, I think, and Mr. Kresh and Mr. Cha and Marcos, they seem to satisfy the developer who's going to come in. We just granted his own change to, to allow for, for his development, for the, for the market rate housing. And I was, I was frankly encouraged by the whole thing. I, I just want to say there were two other proposals to this. I want to publicly thank all the bidders for coming in. One proposal was John Foley looking for, looking for a school. Another one, another one was for, another one was for a developer looking to put in a combination of condominiums and apartments. The, the committee that reviewed these three bids, their city hall employees, they ranked them according to the criteria. And Mr. Foley was number two, and the developer from Sel Hadley was, was number three. They, they both had, they both had higher bids, Mr. President. And, but the, I think the, from a financial perspective, I mean, financial viability to develop a project proposed by either the winner or the two losers, the committee, I think the way they addressed us is that the financial viability of the ultimate winner, I think the way they addressed us is that the financial viability of the ultimate winner, which is US Health Vest and Bay State, was far superior to Mr. Foley's or to the developer from Sel Hadley. So, with that, Mr. President, the committee felt as all, we voted unanimously to recommend to City Council that we sell it to the RFP winner.
Councilor Murphy?
Yeah, I, and I've certainly heard all the information last night, and I certainly was paying attention to the presenters at our beginning of our meeting. And one of my concerns last night was, I mean, clearly, they're closing three psychiatric hospitals in Western Mass. And my first question was, I would assume that those people that are working in the healthcare in those hospitals would be the first potential employees for this new hospital. And the doctor from Bay State indicated that they would be allowed to apply. And that, that was a concern to me only in the aspect that, are they going to be allowed to apply? But they're going to be starting all over from scratch, even though they've worked for Bay State for who-knows-how-many years? So, that is one concern, and I do think there's a legitimate concern in terms of the projection of 250 jobs. And Hoyok's going to get a majority of those or primary, prioritized there. Again, it would seem to me that you've got professional nurses and other healthcare assistants in those other hospitals that would likely be able to come. So, I was a little concerned when the answer was, they would be allowed to apply. And that is a concern. And I also, and I didn't get a chance to ask this last night, and I should have persisted a little bit more. But, you know, the other question I had was, in terms of territory, in terms of psychiatric nursing. You know, you've got people in Franklin County, which I'm assuming that their major psychiatric care is in Greenfield. And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to take jobs away from Hoyok or taxes away from Hoyok, but there are some legitimate labor concerns and some, and healthcare concerns that, you know. I left, and I did support it last night, and I hemmed and hawed, talking about whether or not I was even going to bring up the nursing issue and the hiring. But, again, those are kind of things, I know we had people from the labor unions in terms of construction, and they talked about making sure that they got union wages. And I just want to make sure that, if I can, and I don't know how I can now, but that we're going to provide nursing care, and we're going to provide the people that are providing that care with the same benefits that they would have had had they continued at the other places. And I don't know how I can do that, but those are my concerns.
Councilor Lacy?
Thank you, and I want to thank Councilor Murphy for raising some of the concerns he did. I think that it's, it sounds very similar to the, the school transportation issue that we went to earlier this year, where there was a proposal to move from the union buses to van pool, which was a private operator. And one of the things that was on the table, if we were going to a private operator, that those bus drivers that have had lifelong careers with the buses should have right to first refusal for the van operator positions that would open up in the city of Holyoke. So, I think that there are tactics and tools that we can use as a city of Holyoke as we, you know, work on this purchase. I think that, you know, it is something that the mayor would have to negotiate, but I do think that we have a position with which we can ask the mayor to consider some of these other concerns that are not addressed in the current contract.
Councilor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to address this application from a little different perspective. There was a lot of initial concern and feedback from the neighborhood, as we can all understand, because they experienced a variety of programs following the closing of the Geriatric Authority, and some of them were not particularly enjoyable. So, they had a fairly high degree of concern as to what the nature of the programming would be at the hospital. So, I think it's important for the public to understand that this facility that is proposed is a consolidation of units from current existing hospitals. It is not a closure of hospitals. It's a closure of units in separate hospitals, consolidating them in a specialty hospital, which will be an acute psychiatric hospital. Now, folks that suffer from acute psychiatric illness often have other comorbidities that include drug dependence and other medical diagnoses as well. But, their primary focus and the line of business that this joint venture is for is for acute psychiatric hospital, for which it will be licensed, and which is their core mission. They do not intend to close their outpatient facilities in any of the communities. They do not intend to close their clinics that may be treating or serving folks with drug dependency issues. Those things will remain in place, and they have no intentions of opening those services at this hospital. This hospital will be 120 inpatient beds, expanding the current regional base of 70 beds. What they're consolidating here is 70 beds. So, there will be a net increase in service to the region. And historically, the services in the region have ranged from Greenfield to Springfield to Westfield and Palmer. There have been no in-place services of that sort in Holyoke. And I think, whether we sell them this land or they purchase land somewhere else, I think what they are pursuing, based on what I heard at the public hearing, is they're pursuing a consolidation of services into a specialty hospital. So, we may sell them the land, or somebody else may sell them the land, but we're not going to be able to affect how they run their business regardless. Marcos made it pretty clear that the deal that was before us last night is the deal. There was some discussion about, well, could we get more? Could we get different? Or could we do anything? And basically said, this was an open RFP. This is the response to the RFP. This is the final negotiation. And what you see is what it is. So, if, I think we need to be clear that if we vote this tonight, we're approving it as they presented it. I'm not, I have no expectation it would be modified. We can express our opinions, you know, and our preferences. But, I want the folks in the neighborhood to know that they were very specific on the nature and the security of the facility. All the floors are secure, and the entire building is secure. There are very limited visiting hours. This is an acute inpatient setting where people are usually there for about eight days. They're in acute crisis. They need care. We need to expand that in the region, is the view of this applicant. And I think we all agree with that. We may argue about the where. And personally, my vision for that land was always a nice market housing project. If I had gotten my first pick, I wish they came in with a lot of money. But, be it as it may, I did find the review of our departments to be very thorough and compelling in their presentation. But, I think the concerns that were voiced to me, again, some being the nature of the service and the nature of the comings and goings. Were also always concerns about traffic and the capacity of the neighborhood to handle it. And in this project, it's anticipated, and it's a guesstimate, because there were no studies done, that this would probably be comparable to what the Geriatric Authority had been generating as opposed to 100-plus unit of residential, which would have all that accompanying coming and going, often at similar, you know, at busy times of the day. So, from a neighborhood point of view, I think they were able to answer the concerns and questions. And from a service and a need, a community need point of view, they were pretty clear about what their clinical goals and plans are. I did test them in terms of, I mean, we all know, you pass the project, and then the zoning permits and the other rest of the development takes on a life of its own. We were able to talk with them about their other hospitals that they have, of which they have a fairly long history. They have not ever sold their, this is a joint venture between a nonprofit and a profit. They have not sold to a nonprofit, nor have they added to those inpatient hospitals any outpatient services. So, if the past is predictor of the future, from the concerns that were raised, to me, I felt they were well answered through a very robust meeting last night. It was, kudos to the committee. It was very thorough, very detailed, and I think thorough. Thank you.
Councilor Ballinton?
Thank you. Excuse me. We did indeed have a very productive meeting. We had representatives here, not just from US Health Vest and Bay State, but obviously, as mentioned already, our department heads. And the three folks that were here from the city were, are actually part of this bigger committee that meets and discusses all of these proposals. There's six people total, which includes our DPW superintendent and some additional folks. And the document that we received, and I think they were going to send it around to make sure everyone had this in an email format, really does break down the pros and cons of every proposal that came through. So, we did discuss the merits of the proposals that had come through. But, I want to say a couple of things. One is that one of the benefits of this proposal, as it was presented to us last night, is that the B2 folks actually do not need all the space that is, that was part of the RFP. And so, there's a part that's actually 3.68 acres that we can, as Marcos explained last night, we can actually, in another RFP, kind of re-put that out. Because it's almost like B2 is saying, "I don't need this space. You know, you can have it back." Which obviously is an additional bonus in the sense of further and future marketing pieces. So, I wanted to mention that. Also, when we spoke about what this unit would entail and what it would not entail, they really did take the time, as Councilor Bacon said, to give us a breakdown of what the facility would be. The Bay State folks were mentioning that there's right now 98 beds, and that 70 are the ones that are being eliminated, and the 28 in Springfield are the ones remaining. And so, these 120, according to their statements, would assist with that elimination of the 70, if we were to just look at it mathematically. And finally, what I want to say is, the order that is before us is about sale of a land, sale of land. Just like we don't have any say when we have orders in front of us regarding zoning and what tenants go into something that we approve, we also don't have a say in how B2 is going to run their operation. So, I just want to remind us all about that. I appreciate the feedback we received tonight. But, the reality is that what is in front of us right now is a sale of $250,000 for the land where the geriatric facility is. Their plan is to completely demolish that building and build a state-of-the-art facility with the 120 beds. And that is what we are voting on. So, we cannot vote on the operations of B2. We cannot vote on their hiring practices. Just like we cannot vote on what tenant goes into what strip mall we decide to zone in a different way. So, I just want to remind folks that that is what is in front of us, and that although I appreciate all the feedback that we receive, positive and negative, regarding proposals that come in front of us, we have to remember the scope of our vote. Thank you.
Councilor Lacy?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a few more questions. Do we have, did Marcos impress us with any timeline for like when this has to take place? When this has to be approved in order to move forward?
Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, it was, it was in the memorandum provided by the, so, they're looking at, they have to go through site plan review. So, we haven't even discussed that. And that's, the site plan review is going into the various departments and getting their approval. In here, I want to say that they were looking at demoing the building sometime next year and starting construction and getting up and running in 2021. But, with that caveat, to Councilor Lacy, to the chair, that caveat is, he, the CEO, made it very clear to build up to the 250 jobs and the full bet, you're talking several years down the road. He did not quantify as to how long that process would take to build up to 250 jobs, to the 100, you know, the 100 beds he considers to be, 80% occupancy he considers to be full. So, you're looking at well beyond 2021, but how far beyond, Mr. President, he didn't say.
So, if I could just rephrase that question. So, did Marco say that we need to act by a certain date on the RFP in order to realize the proposal?
No, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that came up.
Because I do, I mean, we talk about this all the time. The mayor has negotiating power, but we are the ones that have to approve it in the end. And so, we can kind of send back the proposal and say, "We want to see more. We want to see different things." And I understand that they are at final negotiations. But, I think that we do have a point of leverage here to say, you know, we support the jobs that are being lost regionally, the union jobs, the working, you know, the living wage jobs of these folks, and we want to see, in the same way. It's a parallel situation, in my opinion, to the move that was being made from the union school bus to the van pool. And that was one of the, I think, chips on the table then. And so, I think that we can kind of use our position here to at least ask the mayor and Marcos and, you know, B2 Health to consider building that into the contract.
Councilor Sullivan?
Yep, thank you. Two things I'd like to take note of, even though we have three people that spoke opposed to it. I've seen no opposition from the neighborhood, from people from Devonshire, from the school committee, from teachers, parents, people that are in the affected neighborhood. No opposition at all. And the other thing I want to make clear to everybody, because this has come up in the past, that this parcel does not include Congregate House. That is not part of this deal. So, I just want to make sure we've got that out there, so there's no misunderstanding about that.
Councilor Ballinton?
Thank you. Just through the chair, to Councilor Lacy's question about the timeline. If I remember correctly, I can't remember who it was that was asking, you know, like, what are the steps? Or what's the timeline on this last night? And if I remember correctly, what I recall Marcos saying is that because, that if we quote-unquote "vote this down" or "don't act on it," that it would have to go, I believe he said, "we would have to reissue a new RFP." That's what I remember him saying, but I don't remember the exact wording. I just, I would just, you know, be, I mean, he's not here to answer that question, so. I, and again, I would echo the statements from my colleague, Councilor Sullivan, that even though I respect the fact that folks are giving feedback, the people that are directly impacted in the neighborhood and in the surrounding area, we have not heard from. And the ward counselor is very active within her ward, and basically stated what some of her concerns were last night from constituents, and I believe those were addressed.
Councilor Bacon? And I would remind my colleagues that there were requests made to Marcos last night with the applicant present as to whether certain things in the offer could be modified. Whether it was money, whether it was whatever you want to say. His feedback to us last night was, "This is the offer as it sits. This is the final offer." It was negotiated. It went through the process, and the RFP process has rules. You have your group. You have your applicants. You have timelines, deadlines, feedback opportunities. And his communication to us was, "This is the proposal. This is finished. We can't go back and start redoing it." Is, was the way I heard him.
Councilor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. We declared this property surplus some time ago, after everything had happened with the Geriatric Authority. And we certainly recognized that it was necessary to market the property. After declaring its surplus, the mayor did the correct way of going out for an RFP, set up the marketing, and attracted three bids. Last night, after learning the three bids being open and learning what they were about, you know, my personal preference was door number two, which was the one that was more residential. But, some of the downfalls of that were how to make it, part of it commercial and part of it mixed-use and phased-in. And there were certainly some questions in terms of the proposal itself and whether or not it could be carried out in the timely fashion. and whether or not it could be carried out in the timely fashion. With that in mind, probably the next best proposal is the B2 Health and Bay State offer. I had a lot of questions, though, and I just wanted to touch base on three of the areas that concerned me, although I will support this this evening because it's not our job to negotiate. It's our job to vote the sale price up or down. It's our job to understand what the use is going to be, and it's our job to understand, you know, what the impact is going to be, certainly in the neighborhood. But zoning, site plan review will have a say over that. And we have a say over both zoning, and we set up site plan review to make sure it happens. The price is fair when you put it next to the demolition of the buildings. The oldest part of the Geriatric Authority is in no shape to be rehabbed, needs to come down. The newer part of the Geriatric Authority is not new, but it certainly could be renovated, but at a very high cost. Therefore, the proposal, together with the $250,000 in demolition of buildings, makes sense. I agree with Counselor Bacon that, I think it might be more than just the three acres. I think it's, two parcels are going to be left open for development in the future. The congregant housing that is now under the, only under the umbrella of the Housing Authority will not be impacted, or will not, will stay there and remain the same. So my concerns were, and a lot of the questions, not just myself last night, were about the taxes. And I did, just a note, the agreement and what we're hearing about taxes are not negotiated tax deals. They're deed restrictions. This is what it is. This is a partnership between a for-profit company known as B2 Health and a not-for-profit exempt company, you know, known as Bay State Hospital itself. The deed restrictions are that if B2 Health were to leave the partnership within that first 10 years, we would still get the 100% taxes. That's interesting, because that's, I think it's important that we, that, you know, we don't open ourselves up for failure in the initial years of this development itself. And that if B2 Health does leave after 10 years, it would reduce to 50% deed restriction. And that is something that we've been using, and Springfield's been using for some time now, and it's not been challenged, and it seems to work pretty good. Because when any city sells to a not-for-profit, potentially exempt, exempt-from-taxes organization, it's nice to know that as part of a deed restriction, at least we're going to get something out of it. If B2 Health stays, it's still 100% taxable. And that's because it is what it is regardless of the deed restrictions itself. And I think that's important. And I pointed out last night that, you know, Bay State is going to do what they're going to do. And they've certainly gobbled up a number of local hospitals. They haven't touched our hospital yet, and our hospital has its own psych unit itself. But Bay State did buy one of our fairly new and profitable manufacturing buildings. Some of us, Counselor Murphy and a few of us, know it as the Wang Building, which when Dr. Wang was coming to the city of Hoyok some 25, maybe 30-something years ago, it was noted to be our savior in jobs and tax, new growth and everything. Bay State operates their lab up there, and they park, and I'm going to try and follow up on this with the tax collector. I think they parked their courier cars overnight, some 50 to 100 cars that are not registered in the city of Hoyok, where we don't even get $1 of property tax. We don't get excise tax on that. And that, to me, is a concern, you know. And I don't fault Bay State, but I fault the system and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts of where certain communities have to burden the not-for-profit exempt properties more than other communities. And when you look at a city like Hoyok, whose income ratio is the lowest in the Commonwealth, that's not fair. And the state, and the state only does tax schemes. They allow us to accept property tax, which is the worst tax in the world. If we took the sales tax from the mall, we could be our own state. We wouldn't need the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we could do our own, we could just exist as our own island. We would not have to worry about taxing schemes and whether or not they're going to reneg on their Quinn bill, you know, promises from years past. But we know that's not going to happen, or at least not overnight, but we could propose it. But don't think we're going to see it in our lifetime, Counselor Tomlin and Murphy, or Sullivan. But I'm sorry, that's, I, this, when you put the pluses and minuses together, the pluses outweigh the minuses. The reference to the, to working with the mayor and working with the services that were contracted by the schools for school bus services, you know, I think that was something we were all proud of. But this is different. This is not a service that the city is contracting through Bay State. This is a service that Bay State is offering, and that's Bay State's, Bay State's problem and determination as to how they want to do it.
Counselor Tomlin?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I really respect the people that spoke tonight in public comment, and I did hear you. But this is, as my colleague stated, a sale of land. You know, that's what we're voting on tonight, a sale of land. And this building's been vacant for a number of years. We have no income coming in, no tax dollars. And Marcos Morrow came in and stated that he got 10 years of 100% tax from this company. And after that, the company had stated that they're not going to, more than likely, they've never sold their company back over, turned it over to a nonprofit. So I can see more than the 10 years having this company being, running this psychiatric program. The meeting was very robust and very interesting. And what I took from it was, we're taking a piece of property up in that area and taking it down, a blighted building that's been there and just sitting there. We're bringing in a state-of-the-art building that is needed, psychiatric units. We can't control what units are being closed, what beds are taken down in Franklin County, Hampton County, Hampshire County. But we're building a state-of-the-art facility there that is, is, it's going to be like a lockdown, it's going to be where nobody can really get out, and very safe. I mean, we discussed here with Dr. Kresh last night how safe that is going to be, that building for the neighborhood. And like my colleagues, I have not heard any opposition to this from the neighbors, from Devonshire, from Whiting Farms, where I travel every day up there to see my in-laws up in Tokoniki Road. I go by that area, that Lower Westfield Road and Holy Family Road every day on a daily basis. And, you know, my concern is the traffic, and that'll be all taken care of in site plan review and traffic design and discussion in the years to come. But my selling point is this was taking a property that is, that is going to take that, they're going to take responsibility taking this building down, and the city won't have to. They're going to build a facility, a $30 million build in that area. We're going to get tax dollars there, and we're going to get up to 200 jobs, hopefully, when it's done. So I'm very much in favor of this project. And also, my colleague and Counselor Bacon, who stated how the, she is very much in favor of this project for that ward, who's in touch with this, the people in that area. I am definitely going to be voting for this project tonight.
Counselor Breslin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm definitely going to be voting against this project tonight. I don't know if there's any contracts that was sent out to everyone else that I was not able to see from Marcos. But some of the wording that says, you know, "Can you describe local residents?" We intend to give preference to residents. We intend. That doesn't say we guarantee. That doesn't say we're going to. We intend to. As we all heard the saying, "Good intentions," right? They're intending to do this. I'm not confident, quite frankly, in the economic development of this property on any sort of level. There's all, if you read a lot of this, what was sent to us, it's very vague. I'm not, you know, outpatient, well, what kind of outpatient? We got Providence Hospital, stone's throw away, right? I mean, when they say outpatient, what kind of outpatient services are they going to be providing? I've been contacted by residents in that area that are against this. Now, do you think on a cold winter night, the elderly that live in Devonshire, we're going to, are they going to come down here for this? Are they? I doubt it. I mean, did anybody offer them services? Were they all notified? Or was it posted in the newspaper that many people nowadays don't actually read? So I have one family that's on vacation for that meeting last night that are vehemently against it, and I've been contacted by people in that residential area that are against this plan. So again, when it's 23 degrees out, are you going to get, you know, a retired couple to get the car warmed up, drive down to City Hall, try to find parking, and come into this meeting to disclose their opposition to this plan? Hoyok has done its psychiatrics for years. Look down the street. Look out this hall. Look out this window. We've done this. We've been down this road. There's no guarantees in this program. For $250,000, and let's remember, we all did a tour about three, four years ago. Many of those rooms have been updated. This is not a dilapidated, falling building with a rotten roof that rain is pouring through. Let's not paint that picture, because there was a program in that, in that building three, four years ago. Remember, we did the tour? I mean, did I, was anybody there? That program didn't work. But again, you know, it's just, we're just, we're selling ourselves short. That's what we're doing. You know, we could put another building like Devonshire, not be worried about, "We intend to hire Hoyok people," but be guaranteed tax dollars. Who, you're trying to tell me that Bay State doesn't have a lawyer? They're paying $250,000 a year to look at this stuff? And we're looking at it, "Oh, this is $250,000. Oh, we intend to Hoyok, to hire Hoyok people." And then when they talk about the taxes, what do they say? They don't say, "We're going to guarantee it. We appreciate your estimate on the taxes," right? And that range would be acceptable. Does that sound like I'm saying, "We're in with Hoyok, we're going to hire Hoyok people, and we're going to spend taxes. Every year, we're going to guarantee you taxes." Or does it leave that vagueness about it? Where, when they get their lawyers from Boston and New York that come in and say like, "Well, we didn't say we were going to spend all that tax money. We said that range would be acceptable. We said we intend to hire Hoyok people." Again, I'm not an attorney. I'm just looking at what was provided to me, and I'm reading it from just, you know, a Hoyok kid. This is the language they're using? There's no guarantees in this program. I'm going to vote against it. It's going to go through. That's okay. I've lost bigger fights, it's not a big deal. But it's just, we're selling ourselves short, in my opinion. And I can tell you, I have been, tonight, on my phone, have been contacted by residents saying, "We didn't know about this meeting. I'm sure B2 went to Devonshire, and they put a little note under everybody's door and said, 'You know what? We're going to put a psychiatric hospital next door to you. How do you feel about that?'" And I'm sure they were all notified. I'm sure Bill from the Hoyok Ma that runs Pyramid Corporation for the Hoyok Ma, I'm sure he was notified too, because he wasn't here last night either. So I just, we're selling ourselves short, Hoyok, let's put it in. I can guarantee you, before 10 years is up, it's going to be a nonprofit. They're going to sell it. They're going to get it to the hospital. It's going to be another hospital like Hoyok Hospital, pays us, you know, tons of money in taxes, right? I mean, it's going to happen. We're selling ourselves short. It's unfortunate. I'm going to lose, but that's okay. Like I said, I mean, we intend to give preference. We intend to give preference to residents of Hoyok. If this was me and I was B2, I would say, "I guarantee you, I am going to hire Hoyok residents." That's not what they said. They had an opportunity to say that, but they didn't. So let's just, let's just read it at face value. It's great, we don't want a vacant building that's run over by, you know, by whatever, and it's falling down, but there's, this is, this is, this is just, this is Lynch School when they were going to give it to the charter. That's what this is. And this is all I've gotten. Maybe I missed something, but I didn't see any contract. Counselor Tomlin talked about, you know, Marcos, you know, said this and said that. I don't want to, I don't, you know, what he said, what he says, he might, he might be, he might have a job interview tomorrow and be gone. Where's the contract? This is what I got emailed to me. This is not a signed document. This is, my intentions are this. We hope to do that. We appreciate how you evaluate our property. Maybe we'll agree with it. Maybe when I get my lawyers to look at this a little closer, maybe we might not agree with it. So sell, you know, sell the whole ranch, sell everything, right? I mean, why not? Thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, and a couple of things. Number one, and I didn't have anybody, and I know Counselor Bacon indicated most of her constituents seem to be in favor of having no protest against the, that she's heard.
What I indicated is the concerns that they expressed to me. I expressed to the applicant. There were concerns. There's always been concerns up there on every project. I mean, I'm not saying there are no concerns in the neighborhood. I mean, that's why we were asking those questions.
Back to Counselor Murphy.
So, I mean, I'm not totally against the proposal. I have concerns, and I will say this, and going back to a few things. Number one, when we asked Marcos, and this didn't quite jive with me, and maybe I just don't quite get the process of a request for proposal. But as I understood it, the proposals were submitted, and then he was in a position, and as I understood it, he negotiated with this group to get a different price. I don't know if he did that with the others. So if we're going to say that this is the final thing, and if we don't accept this, we have to go back, that seems to, maybe that is the case. But it seems to me like, I'm going to negotiate, or I'm going to try to negotiate with one party, but not with the others, that would seem to be taking the RFP and not just accepting the proposal as it is, you're giving everybody a fair shot. But a couple of other things, and again, I think a hospital there makes some sense. I mean, Geriatric Authority was there a long time, and as far as I know, there weren't a lot of issues in the neighborhood with the Geriatric. Obviously, a different kind of healthcare. But I did have that issue in terms of, you know, because I had said, "Well, why don't we, why don't we make the proposal 100% and set it to 10 years if they sell it 75%?" "Oh, we can't do that, because it's our policy." Well, first of all, if I'm negotiating with somebody, and I already tell them this is what my policy is, there's no way I'm going to ever agree to go beyond 50% after that position. So again, I think there are, you know, legitimate concerns. And the last thing I'll say is, if this were being sold to a company coming in and said, "We're going to provide 500 minimum wage jobs, but we're going to give you $1 million." Do I want 500 minimum wage jobs for $1 million? I don't. I mean, I want wages that people can live on. And again, my concern, and I would hope that any nurse or any healthcare professional that gets hired for that facility gets the kind of wages that they should get if they're in a union collective bargaining situation. And hopefully, they would, many of those would be Hoyok residents and Hoyok healthcare professionals. Again, I'm not opposed to this as a project, but I do think that we have an ability to maybe influence things a little bit more and negotiate a little bit better. But that's just my view.
Counselor Leacy and then Counselor Sullivan?
Just one more question for the night for me. Is there, was there any sense that there's going to be permit applications? I understand there's going to be a site plan review, but is there going to be any sort of permit applications that needs to go through city council approval? Because that would be another opportunity to, you know, negotiate some of these benefits for the city. So we've been putting, you know, the 30% Hoyok hires on our marijuana special permit, so we would be able to do the same thing for this type of company if they're coming through for special permits?
That was not indicated.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes, thank you. Just want to speak on half of some senior citizens. I know there's a couple of others here on the city council as well, but I think I'm uniquely qualified to say that, I don't know too many senior citizens, that if they felt strongly in opposition to something, would let 23-degree or minus 23-degree weather keep them from coming here and stating their stubborn, old opinion. All right? That's it.
Just, Counselor Leahy, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor McGee. I too believe that the location is an excellent fit for a medical center, a medical office, or a medical establishment. I also do think it's also a perfect fit for residential as well. Coming right off the highway, we have the Mass Plague, we have 9202, we have all the different roadways going. I do have some concerns, because I have too been contacted by constituents, some constituents that weren't in the know about it, and that's not any of our fault. It was posted. These people should be going online. But however, I did get notified that people were asking that. I was not able to come to the meeting last night because of death of my family. However, there are some questions to be sent. There are questions to be asked. You know, and I hope these people, and I hope you guys in the city council know there's a huge difference between nonprofit and not-for-profit in regards to taxes and money and that sort of thing. The fact that- The fact that they don't use the word "shall," there's nothing definite in their proposal, you know, that's a concern. Counselor President makes a valid point with that. So those are some of the questions I have too. I also have some questions on the RFP process and also negotiating as well. So if I could ask the good city council if we can suspend our necessary rules and call Attorney Crystal up to the...
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Legal Department to ask questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Crystal, can you just walk me through the RFP process negotiations?
So, I mean, everybody's kind of touched on it a little bit tonight, but the RFP was opened, we took the proposals. What has to happen before we can negotiate is we actually have to close, we have to make a decision and negotiate with the person that we decide with. So we can't just negotiate with everybody and then kind of see what the best deal is. They have to give us their best possible deal they can, and then we have to decide based on that. We did do interview processes with everybody, which is part of the allowable process. And then we asked follow-up questions, and they were also, it's allowable by the process, but as far as negotiation of sale price, or where we asked, you know, if we could chop off some of the land, that's all done after we decide who our top idea is gonna be. So B2 was chosen, and then we negotiated as far as the tax obligation, the $250,000 price that they came up to. That all had to be done after our decision was made. So I hope that clarifies some of that. And I just want to point out, this is land disposition. We can't control the inner workings of their business. It's not a special permit to run a business in the city. It's simply to bid on whether or not this building should get erected as it's laid out, and if it's gonna be the best use for that area. So I just want to try and keep everybody on that focus. As far as negotiations with the company themselves, it's not really what we can do. It does have to go through site plan. There may be permits along the way as far as what they need to do for the development, but as far as any other negotiation, we're stuck. So we would have to reopen the RFP, put out bids again if we don't choose this to happen.
Anyone else? Questions?
I have one question for legal. Just reading the order before me, it says, "The properties are identified, the Hoyok assessor's map, 117 block 00, parcel 018, map 117 block 00, parcel 145," and then so on. It was mentioned that there's a parcel or three, was it three acres?
3.68 acres.
3.68 acres. That's taken out of this description? Is that, just making sure that's clarified?
Um, I...
Or are we giving them all of it, and then they're going to parcel it off to sell? They'd have the ability to sell that 3.6? Or just want to make clarity on that?
We're keeping it. So it's not that we're giving it to them, and they're giving it back. They're just not getting that portion. If...
And that is spelled out in the deed restriction, in essence, what we're selling? That's my question.
The layout of what they're getting will be laid out in their purchase and sale. So it's not that we're giving all and keeping some. It's, here's the area that you're getting, the square footage. Marcos had a map that he actually showed where it kind of hacks off. It's on the Lower Westfield Road portion of it. I don't know the best way to describe it, but he had a map visual.
You've answered it.
Yeah. And I did ask Oped, you know, if that had already been kind of cut out, and they said it had been. So they already cut out that parcel, which is the map that we saw last night with the dotted lines.
Okay, perfect.
Counselor President.
Can you just, Crystal, could you just tell us, the six members of the Geriatric Authority Review Committee, do you know who they are? Or just the positions? I don't need the names.
I can tell you who they were. They told them last night as well. It's myself, Mike McManus, Lori, the procurement officer, Marcos, John Dyjek, and Sarah Meyer from Planning and Economic Development. I think that was six.
Yep.
And all six voted in favor of this?
Correct.
Was there, was there ever a dollar bid offered from this organization for this sale?
Yes.
So they offered us a dollar?
Correct.
Seems pretty fair, and equitable, and honest, and forthcoming, and they're gonna pay taxes, and they offered us a dollar. Imagine that.
They went up from a dollar to $250 based on the negotiation.
Right. On a dollar, but they started with a dollar. Thanks. They must think so highly of Hoyok.
Counselor President, we're done. Counselor Bacon.
I just want to clarify a couple of points. There's not going to be any outpatient activity at the site. It's all gonna be the hospital, one contained hospital.
Can we negotiate that, Crystal?
Counselor President.
So...
Point of order. Hold on. Counselor Bacon has the floor. Counselor Bacon.
And I'm losing my train of thought. I interrupted here. That was, that was my main point. And the other point was, we have put this property out for bid on three separate occasions. On one occasion, we got nothing. On the next occasion, we got a company that offered us a dollar, and then when they went and looked further at the property, decided that they didn't want to give us a dollar. And so it's a little bit ironic to me that in the third time around, we got, you know, both a proposal for a hospital which you could liken to the geriatric type of building, and then also the residential, which as I and Counselor McGivern said, would have been our first choice in terms of a project. But the projects have to have the money. They have to actually be able to happen. And we could continue to speculate that, you know, in another year, three years, five years, we would get a better proposal, and they'd come in and do it in two years. However, we haven't found that happening with our other properties, and we argued about Lynch School for, I think, about 10 years. And so this is a good proposal. Is it the favorite one, maybe, that we would have chosen? I don't know. But it is a real proposal, and the tax money that is articulated in it is based on the assessor's value of what the taxes would be. It's not, "Let's make a deal on the taxes." That was just an estimate. And it will be what it will be once the build-out is done. That's a mathematical equation. It's not a negotiation. So I just want to clarify those couple of points. Thank you.
Just say one last thing.
As I mentioned in my points before, we spoke at length last night. I understand we cannot all be at all meetings. We all have other commitments. However, there is documentation that is sent to us either through email, or through our administrative assistant, or however it is. This is part of our job, is being prepared with the facts, being aware of what the information provided has been. Last night, we spoke at length. As soon as the meeting ended, it becomes available online. We can all review it. It doesn't matter if we had a meeting at the same time last night and we couldn't be here, we can log on and take a look if we are interested in knowing the facts. And as I said, last night, we went step by step regarding the six-member committee that reviews these types of proposals. They gave us a document, which is public information, that talks about the pros and cons of every proposal, every single one. We had one that was great, as Counselor McGivern stated, regarding some residential units. Guess what? That proposal, the person who wanted to do that, their biggest experience has been doing a project with five units. Lack of experience, and they could also not commit to how they were gonna get the funding for this investment. The proposal that is in front of us is from a company that has a track record. It's a $30 million investment, and they have the equity and the resources to make this project happen. Can they flip in six months and go belly up? Absolutely. That can happen with anything that comes in front of us. But we don't have a crystal ball, and we don't have the time to continue to say, "Not in my backyard, psychiatric this, psychiatric that." I have an issue with the fact that there is conversation in these chambers when projects like this come through, like this, for example, where there is a tone of stigma. There is a tone of stigma because it's an inpatient psychiatric unit? We have to go tell somebody, "Oh, an inpatient psychiatric unit is coming to your backyard. Are you okay with that?" That's stigma, people. What are we doing here? We have a proposal in front of us. We were told how the points were reached. We were told how the numbers were, excuse me, acquired. We were also told, yes, they initially offered a dollar, and guess what? With the negotiation from the Office for Planning and Economic Development, that dollar went up to $250,000. So thank you, Oped, for getting us $249,999 extra dollars. And I said it last night on the record. So we cannot be department heads and city councilors. We have to trust that the people that are doing their job are doing their job. And we have an order in front of us that is simple right now, sale of land. You want to go figure out with Bay State how they're gonna run their B2 proposal? Go talk to them. That's not what we're doing right now. So can we please just move on this question, take the vote? If the votes are here, great. If they're not, it's too bad. I believe this is a good proposal. We have heard from the ward counselor, again, that there are concerns that have been presented to her. She had the opportunity to discuss those last night. Let's move forward. We have a good proposal in front of us. Let's vote on it.
And the motion?
And the motion.
I just wanted to clarify something you said earlier.
For the chair.
Yeah. So I think you raised a good point earlier with the, because the wording we have before us is the wording is the order that was filed through me. So I'm just wondering if we need to clarify what we're voting for, especially in terms of the 3.1 acres in which they're procuring and the 3.68 that they're not procuring, but was part of the RFP. So I don't want to just sort of take a vote and then have it be argued later on. I'd rather just spill it out. So if we have to amend the order on the floor, we're voting for the accepted offer and agreed-to offer between the City of Hoyok and U.S. Health Best relative to the 3.1 acres. And I can give you the exact number with, let's see, I have it. I have it somewhere.
The maps at 3.68, the one they're not using.
Yeah, it's 13, they're buying 13.179 acres. So whatever that is, I would rather just have us say that that's what we're agreeing to sell for the $250,000.
Yeah, the only reason I brought it up is, because Counselor Brownson brought up a good point, since they're segregating it. But when you read this order, and I have nothing else attached to it, I don't have the deed. It just says, "The parcel is owned multifamily resident and professional office, RO, and is the former Geriatric Authority." So if they are segregating those two parcels in some way, do we have to reconfigure it in the deed language? That's my only question.
Right, so...
Because you usually have to spell it out in the deed, and then say, "That's what we're purchasing."
Yeah, we're talking about, that's really complicated business, reading those two deeds. So I would rather just, I mean, I'll make a motion that we, that just clarified the order that we're voting to approve the 13.16 acres for the $250,000.
Second.
So the motion is to amend...
Crystal has her handle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel, Legal Department, Crystal.
The order as written, those two parcels, this is accurate. This is...
Oh, all right.
Post A and R, or whatever needed to happen.
So we're good.
All right, so, all right, well, then, okay.
So then, motion is redrawn.
Yep, sure.
For good reason. Counselor McGivern?
Just, the city parceled the property years ago, partly because of concrete housing, and partly because of a loan that we took out on the actual land that the authority's building sit on. And that's why there's three parcels, and they were actually been put out to bid in different ways. And the parcel that we're keeping is closer towards Mount Marie, and has frontage on Lower Westfield Road. And the two parcels, unfortunately, the back parcel is probably the most valuable, because it's up on top of the hill and has the best views. But this is the way that the city had done it years ago, and if you look at the map in the middle, it's identical to what the wording is on the 30B language.
So as we're all on the same page, and we're good.
That's good enough for me.
So here, no further discussion. The motion was to act, so therefore, the motion is to receive and adopt the sale for $250,000. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the $250,000.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Restonhan?
Nope.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Eleven years, one day.
At your vote, you approved the transfer. There was no charter and rules.
Oh, we got one more.
More item, one more.
Did we miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. It's 15D. I apologize. Thank you. Committee on DGNR, to whom was referred an update, referred a law department update, the city receivership program.
Should we save and adopt the committee report?
It was compliant. The motion is to save and adopt. Another discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, we had a really great review by the acting solicitor. Went over, let's see, 13 different properties that, that received, so let me just step back. So four or five years ago, Counselor McGee, Counselor President, Counselor Jordan, myself, a few other counselors, kind of really got behind what's happening in Springfield with receivership program. And then Attorney Cunha, and now her successor, Attorney Carroll, and now Attorney Barnes, Attorney Pear have really taken this program for receivership, because we saw what was happening in Springfield, and they've run with it. And they've got this code enforcement team, and so Attorney Barnes really brought us through the whole process and procedure that they take, which is really cumbersome and voluminous. And so they meet once a month, and they, the code enforcement group, and so what we passed in this body a year ago, said, "Let's get an update on this every six months." And, you know, I was a little delinquent, and so we got an update. We should have had this update late last year, but it's okay, we had it last night, and we'll get another update in May relative to what's happening. So the update on the 13 properties is really incredible. And I will forward to the administrative assistant the colored photos, and once he sends it out to you, I think you'll be so impressed. I just want to speak about one property at 44 Ridgeway, which is, you know, it's a really nice neighborhood by the college. It's a, you know, heavy residential, quiet street. Well, on that street, in that house, you're talking a house of horrors. The types of crimes that were happening in there would turn your, I mean, state police, Hoyok police, the things that were happening in that house were unbelievable. This little house that nobody knew about, set back actually from Ridgeway, with a long driveway, and a swarm of police came in, got that defendant, now that criminal, and now that inmate out of there. And so what do you do with the house? Well, the house, among other houses that receivers talked about, were either hoarders or whatever. This house in particular was, I mean, I'm not even gonna say what it was, but it was having to do with children, so we'll leave it at that. It was unbelievable. And so you can only imagine, having to go in there and clean that out. I mean, I just, I'm getting, I'm getting, just getting sick thinking about it. But they did it. So, you know, when we think about our local police, our state police, you know, they're going through their own troubles, but they have to deal with that stuff. And we want to credit the women and men that do that. And nevertheless, the code enforcement went in, did a great job. Now that house is, it's been sold to a private owner, and boom, back online, back on tax rolls, with a bunch of the others. So that's why it was a really important update. So I want to thank the assistant solicitor. I'm looking forward to getting her back in a more timely fashion, and then we can have more of these updates, because those are the kind of developments, and they're going throughout the whole city. It's not, it's just virtually every ward. We've been talking about Ward 7, the Highlands. It's every single ward in the city that's really affected by this. And, but now we've got a group that's on point, that's really into it. They gotta go to court, Mr. President, and deal with judges that review this regularly, and it's pretty hardcore. So I'm really encouraged that we're, that we've got a group of, a team there that's looking at it. And so that's why I want to bring it back to this body's attention and the general public. So when you talk to your constituents, I mean, the neighbors and know, you know, is that house vacant? Or, you know, they're not shoveling or whatever? Maybe, you know, call Brian, call Fitzy, call Damian, call, you know, they'll look into it, and they get on point. And we get these things back on a tax roll, and we make these neighbors better. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Valentin.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a really great presentation from our Law Department, especially because it was really impressive to see the very quick turnaround of some of these properties. And also, Crystal mentioned that if you look at the street addresses of some of these homes, it's clear that we are trying to impact kind of several blocks at a time to, you know, to make a real impact in certain neighborhoods. So there were a number of properties on Walnut that were mentioned, and the one that stands out for me was the one that Crystal talked about regarding, it was less than a year. It was like eight months from like the beginning of the receivership process to the end of it. And so kudos to our Law Department and also the Board of Health and everyone who's helping with the enforcement. Because it shows that this approach is definitely working and something that we're able to benefit from. Thank you.
Is it Counsel McGivern?
Real quick. Just excellent report by Crystal, by our Law Department, excellent work by the city. And I just, I know Counsel President has always been a proponent of receivership, and I just think it's a tool that way. I wish we found a lot more years ago than what we did, and it's something that works fantastic, and I can't say more than what's already been said.
Counsel Tomlin.
Great program, real brief, Jim. This is.
Good summary, Pete.
Yeah, this is excellent. I thank Crystal for the report and Counsel Barley for bringing this forward and doing this on a regular basis. It's really important. If anybody out there knows of any properties that you live near or whatever that seems vacant or the grass is growing or not shoveled, to let them know the receivership program or any city councilor to really improve our neighborhoods out there, and it's really a great program.
So motion is that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. No charter and rules, no joint council and school committee, so motion, orders and resolutions. Eighteen from myself that DPW must do T repave North Hampton Street from Hampden to Mountain View.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, refer to DPW?
Second.
All those in favor, all opposed. Nineteen from Counsel Murphy and LeBron Martinez that the engineer examine the safety of pedestrians' walkways on Dwight Street, both from City Hall parking lot to Heritage parking lot to the approved parking deck.
Make the motion be adopted and sent to the city engineer.
Motion is to receive, adopt, send to DPW and engineer. All those in favor?
One quick.
Aye.
Just real quick, that if you really come up this.
Nice try, Danny.
From High Street down, if there is, and as I came down tonight, there was a vehicle parked on the top, and there was a larger vehicle parked down by the bottom. You can't, if you were, there was a person walking, the people coming cannot see them. And this was actually an employee of the City Hall that asked me to take a look at that, and it was at one of the meetings we were at. And then I went down to Children's Museum, and that cross, that walkway, and the same thing. When SUVs or a truck is there, you can not see if there's anybody walking, nor can you see the signs. And I've talked to the engineer, he's definitely going to take a look and try to see what we can do.
So motion was to receive, adopt, and send to DPW and engineer. Twenty.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six together and refer them to the Committee on Finance.
So twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Take them up as a package and send them to finance. Do you have a reading? So twenty is the pedestrian bicycle safety grant. Twenty-one is a hundred and ten dollars and fifty-two cents. It looks like a prior year bill. Twenty-four is six thousand from Health Services to Veterans, which would probably be the grant that we just approved. Twenty-five is twenty thousand from Health Services to postage Veterans benefits. And then twenty-six is five hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-one cents from stabilization to litigation. All those are going to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take up twenty-two and twenty-three together.
Motion is take twenty-two and twenty-three as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
They passed the first reading. These are the items for injured on duty. It's just a transfer of this from a salary line item for accounting purposes.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Our discussion, Counsel McGivern?
It's just a accounting purpose of taking salary line item dollars into injured on duty line item dollars. It's the same pay.
So the first one is twenty-two from firefighters, four thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents for injured on duty, of which there are two. For twenty-three, it's for the Police Department, nine thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents for injured on duty. There are three. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bertley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous.
What your vote, you approve the transfers. Twenty-seven from Counsel Murphy, order that the city solicitor offer an opinion regarding liability under the following circumstances. After a snowstorm, a homeowner clears their sidewalks within twenty-four hours. However, two days later, the city plows and pushes the snow back on. Who will have the liability? If someone gets hurt on the sidewalk, how long does the owner have to clear the sidewalk?
Motion to refer to the Law Department.
Send to Legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Twenty-eight from Counsel Murphy, where no parking be allowed on the odd-numbered side of Jackson Street from the corner of South Bridge Street to the alleyway.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Twenty-nine from Counsel Murphy, that the Police Department report on the frequency of accidents at the intersection of Maple and Hampshire Street in the past year, and that the city engineer examine ways to improve the safety.
Public safety?
Refer to, oh.
Police and the engineer?
I was going to say, refer to HPD with a copy to the city engineer.
Do we, do you just want to report back, or do you want to go to public safety at all, or just report?
I would take the report back, because I think.
Okay, so receive, adopt, send to.
Parking or whatever.
HPD and what else?
Copy to city engineer.
A copy of city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thirty from Counsel Sullivan, the Retirement Board, Mayor, Treasurer, Order, Bond Council, along with the manager of the Hoyok Gas Electric, be invited to a meeting on finance, discuss the merits of the pension obligation bond. Any cash flow savings the city may exceed five million dollars. Make a motion, add my name as well.
Send to finance with a copy to all the folks that are listed as guests.
So a copy, receive, refer to finance, and send out a notice to all mentioned. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thirty-one from Counsel Sullivan, the HNE stall, a street light be placed on pole number two on Stratford Road. Motion be receive, adopt, send to HNE, copy to the mayor.
Some of.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thirty-two from Counsel Sullivan, that the sign, that signs be placed at city entrances and strategic intersections which shall read, please donate only to recognized charities.
Ordinance.
To ordinance. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Again, again.
Counsel Sullivan.
We've already discussed this in committee. We had this last year in public safety. It, we had quite a bit of discussion around it as far as the signage goes. It came out of committee, I believe, referred to DPW. Nothing's happened with it. So I'd like to just receive, adopt, and copy to DPW and get these signs up.
You'd need an ordinance for the signs.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you?
You need an ordinance.
You need an ordinance for it. Just because it went to public safety doesn't mean that it comply with the ordinance.
Okay.
They have to refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thirty-three from Counsel Bacon, order that Rock Valley Road from Southampton Road to Southampton Town Line be repaired and resurfaced. Residents are reporting many potholes.
Receive and refer to DPW.
Motion is receive.
And would just note that the rest of the road was done. That's just the remaining piece to be done. Thank you.
Motion is to receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thirty-four from Counsel Bacon, order that our DPW superintendent has recommended a sidewalk construction to Sunset and Ashley Road at Route 202. The estimated cost is twenty-five thousand. Hoyok Community College agreed to participate. So are you asking for a financial transfer here, Counselor?
I was asking for coordination between DPW and Hoyok Community College to see if there was an avenue relative to funding. And in lieu of that, or while we're looking to see if there are any options there, that there would be a temporary solution to accomplish the closing. That's the rest of the order.
So would you like it?
So I would like it. I would like it to be received and sent to DPW, but I would also like it copied to public safety.
All right, so.
I don't want this order to get lost because of the money.
Right, I guess my issue, there might be funds from someone else to help pay for it. The city might have some funds, so without an appropriation. So motion is to receive, refer to DPW, Hoyok Community College. And send to public safety to get everything back so that then they.
Yeah, so that there'll be a place to.
So it's not a copy, so send it to public safety for.
Tracking, yeah, and I have spoken to Jeff Hayden about it at HCC, and, you know, I don't even know what possibilities there are, but I just want to see if there are.
Please add my name to that, Mr. President.
Okay, adding Counsel Barley. And do you want this sent to Jeff Hayden at HCC to make sure we.
Well, that might, that might be a good idea, because.
All right, so friendly amendment is that.
He's aware of it. He would get it where it needs to be.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Yeah, the Dean of Administration and Finance would be the appropriate.
But he was, he was the original.
Right, at least we got a contact.
Person when the whole thing went through, and this was.
Just right.
Years ago now, but anyway.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. From Counsel Bacon and Counsel Murphy, that a single disbursement from the Bacon Building Revolving Fund and the amount of a hundred thousand be utilized for the demolition costs associated with 107 Clemente Street.
So that will, where will that need to go, Crystal? Could we just, could we receive and adopt it to amend? It's not an amendment. I'm sorry?
It's an amendment to the revolving fund, and so if we just establish the revolving fund through ordinance.
Well, you have.
Mr. President, if I may.
Counsel Bacon.
So I sought clarification on this, and what it is, is we're voting for a use of the money one time. We are not looking to amend the use of the revolving fund. So we, it does not need to go to ordinance to amend the language of the revolving fund unless we deem that we want to do this on a regular basis. So for now, this is a one-time request because the money is sitting there and it has not been used. And this is seen as a desirable thing to be corrected with the use of this fund one time.
Counsel Lisi?
But if the limit on expenditures is fifty thousand dollars and we want to use a hundred thousand dollars, we need an ordinance change.
Thirty-six, just to let everyone else know, especially those at home, from Counsel Bacon and Murphy, that the limit on the total amount which can be expended from the revolving fund be amended from fifty to a hundred.
That is a separate order contemplated if we're going to continue to use the fund in that regard.
Yeah, the issue with the revolving fund is that it is capped at fifty thousand. And you would have to have an amendment to that in order to be able to go past it.
So we, you agree with that? Because I mean, we batted this around as to which way we should go. But if we have the cap of fifty, then we would need to go to ordinance.
Counsel McGivern, then Counsel Lisi.
Item thirty-five is nothing but a request. As I stated earlier, we have no control over revolving funds. We can ask them how to spend it. They can or they can't. Before I even would ask how to spend it, I'd like to know why 107 Clemente Street is a top priority over other buildings that need to be demolished. And I would expect that we'd have a report from the Building Department, the Board of Health, and others who recognize that we've been working on these issues of buildings that need to be demolished, and there needs to be a priority plan in place.
Counsel Murphy.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Counsel, I'm sorry, Counsel Lisi, sorry.
Thanks. So I do want to say that I think that the Problem Property Group is the group that is creating the priority list for what needs to be demolished and what can we actually utilize receivership programs for. But really, my big question here is how is the revolving fund capped at a hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, fifty thousand dollars accruing a balance of a hundred thousand dollars? But it can't because it's a revolving fund, and so that any surplus should be going back into the general fund.
No.
No, 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 no. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
No, that's why we set the caps.
That's why I. Let me, I'll back up. When this revolving fund came around, it was Paul Pear that asked for it in order to address some of the buildings that have issue. And they're getting these monies to come in. There was no cap on the amount that could go in. There was a cap on how much could be expended in a year. That was well discussed in their meetings, which I had an issue with. But the setback was always that if the revolving fund we felt was getting too much, we could shut it down. Take the money back into the general account and redo it. So the problem is, it is putting a lot of money into that account, which really is going past what really it should be. Counsel Lisi?
I'd like to see the whole thing go to ordinance then. I mean, if we are going to have revolving funds at all, and I understand all the arguments against them, I think we should have very conservative caps on them so that there's money set aside for different departments to do whatever projects and needs that they have. However, the surplus beyond the cap needs to come back to the general fund. We can't be having each individual department starving the city as a whole.
Hold on, Counsel Murphy, then Counsel Bacon.
Yeah, so two things in answer to Counsel McGivern. I know I meant.
Didn't ask a question.
You did. Well, every statement I've ever heard from you, I always took it as a question. And you can question that.
One for Mr. Murphy.
But I did meet with the building commissioner, and this has been, as far as I know, the number-one property in terms of problems. They've been trying to sell it for years. It's been boarded up for about twenty years. There's bricks falling off, and it's next to an elderly housing on Boujou Boucher on Cabbage Street. They've had to put fencing around it. They've tried to prevent other things from going on, so it's got a danger. They've already started looking at potentially getting a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. They're also working with the Housing Authority to get that grant, which would then provide some parking for the residents at Boujou Boucher, which would help in terms of snow removal in South Hoyok and Cabbage Street and on South Bridge Street. So that's why, and I was asked to try to get at least this appropriation, this appropriation plus some community development funds and some other revolving, not other, I won't say revolving funds, because I don't want to be revolutionary, but other funds that he has, they were going to be able to do it. And they're also planning on trying to do that with the city's demolition team rather than going out to bid. The original thought was two-hundred-and-forty thousand. They think they can get that under around two-hundred thousand. But it is a dangerous facility, and it's not getting any better, so.
Counsel Bacon.
Thank you. So this was a discussion that took place in ordinance committee. And this comes under the heading of no good deed goes unpunished. We filed the order at the request of the department to try to facilitate the remediation of this property. We were more focused on the use of the fund and whether we were within the constraints of that. So we kind of overlooked the fact that we had the cap of the fifty thousand that we were exceeding. So it does need to go to ordinance so that we can address both of those issues, even though we were initially more focused on one.
On the motion, go to ordinance.
It's all fine. If we have to amend the cap, then that's what we have to look to, but also the amounts going over the cap should also be addressed. So with that, thirty-five and thirty-six, motion would be to suspend the rules, take up as a package, or refer to ordinance.
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. So both went to ordinance. Now, thirty-seven from Counsel Anderson Burgos, order that the.
And thirty-eight as a package?
Second.
So take up thirty-seven, thirty-eight as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. So thirty-seven, only.
I don't think so.
Sorry, it's thirty-seven alone.
Resident only parking be placed on Columbus Ave.
That goes to ordinance. Thirty-seven is ordinance.
All right, so thirty-seven separately. Alls opposed? So thirty-seven, uh, only.
I don't think so.
Sorry, it's thirty-seven alone.
Resident-only parking be placed on Columbus Ave.
That goes to ordinance.
That's ordinance.
Thirty-seven is ordinance.
All right, so thirty-seven separately. Uh, resident only on Columbus Ave, refer to ordinance. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls. Thirty-eight is.
Receive, adopt, and refer to the GNE.
Is to put a light pole on Sycamore Street near the intersection of West Franklin Street. So receive, adopt, send to HNE, a copy to the mayor. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? Any late files? We do have a late file.
Oh.
Oh, Joe, Joe, Joe. I, I mean.
Joe? Joe?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Counselor McGivern, order that Chestnut Street between Dwight and Hampton Street be named as an overlay district for Ma Boyle, longtime Hoyoke Catholic teacher. Motion receive, adopt?
Um, if everybody's ready to do it, make a motion to suspend the rules so we can discuss and make a motion to adopt.